Okay. Okay. On to.
I'll present.
Okay, I think we'll get started. Welcome, everybody, to the regular city council meeting of February 10, 2025. With that, I would ask the city clerk to please call the roll.
Counselor Ring.
Here.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Here.
Counselor Runyon.
Here.
Counselor Randall.
Here.
Counselor Richardson.
Here.
Mayor Mays.
I'm here. Let the record show that Counselor Rod Runyon is on Zoom. And item three is the Pledge of Allegiance. At this time, I'd like to call on Counselor Ben Ring to please lead us in the pledge.
Pledge of Allegiance, due to the flag of the United States of America.
To the Republic which stands under God, liberty and justice for all.
Item four is the approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda. I'll second it.
Good.
It's been moved by Counselor Ring and seconded by Counselor Randall to approve the agenda. Is there any comments or questions? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 5A, we have a presentation regarding the Gorge Transit 2025 Regional Update. And I see Kathy Kirkpatrick in the audience. I think she's going to come forward and introduce herself and tell us all about Gorge Transit.
Right. Yeah, Ethic Development District is the regional management group.
Sorry.
And I'm here with Jesus Mendoza, who is the operations manager for the Link Public Transportation System here in the Dows. And Emily Reed, who is our contractor, who does public education for us. And Emily, if you could bring up the presentation.
Could you speak a little more directly into the microphone?
Just slide the microphone closer, please.
Now it is.
Oh, okay. I think it was on before. Emily, could you bring up the presentation for me?
Thank you. I'm having a little bit of difficulty.
We hear you fine.
One more time. There we go. Thank you for your patience.
All right. So we're here today to tell you about the Gorge Transit System, your regional transit system here in the Gorge, which covers a by-state area in our rural region. And we're going to make this super short, so we're going to talk to you about the 10 most important things that you need to know about the regional system. And the first thing that you need to know is coordination. So, and Emily, if you could, okay, perfect, is coordination. So 25 years ago, the Gorge Regional Transportation Providers came together, there's five of them in the five county area, came together and and had a vision for a regionally connected public transportation system. So, next slide. As they were working on it, first of all, they were all serving their own counties with dialer ride. But pretty soon in 2011, Skamania County Transit launched the first fixed route system in the Gorge. And then Columbia Area Transit in 2017 launched the second fixed route. And then by 2021, we have what is, what is pretty much what we have today, which is a regionally connected public transportation system that serves people who are going to work, veterans who are trying to get to the VA in Portland, retirees here in the Dows who just want to go to Goldendale for lunch, many of them do. People trying to get to medical appointments and, of course, people trying to get to higher education. So, so the two campuses of our Colory Gorge Community College. Next slide. So, we also coordinated, we have a regionally, a regional website that shows riders all of the schedules, the maps, gives them all the information they need to know. They can sign up for transit alerts in case there's snow and we have to move the routes or the schedules. Next slide. And we have the Gorge Pass. So if you don't know what that is, it's an annual transit pass, costs $40 for 12 months of unlimited rides on regional transit. We also work together to, to to get the word out to the public. So we do a lot of public outreach and education. We have travel trainers, of course, who are who are teaching people how to use the bus. We have a great newsletter that you can see here that tells people, and especially those Gorge Transit Pass holders, where they can go in the region, really cool places to go out for dinner or really great businesses that they should check out. We do a lot in person. We go to a lot of community events. I'm sure you've seen us there. And, and we do market to our region, regional large employers who purchase Gorge passes for their, for their employees. Of course, the, the, you know, that the the downtown pass system is one that, that you have promoted and is working really well for folks in the Dows. Gorge Regional Transit Strategy, we completed that in 2023. It provides us with a collective vision. All five counties participated. That's elected leaders, our state parks, federal agencies, state agencies. We had a lot of participation, about 150 people, including the Community College and others, healthcare, all of our healthcare providers, community-based organizations coming together to hammer out a collective vision and then figuring out the nuts and bolts of how to get us there. Next slide, and some of that is in our coordination. So this is a pulse system that we created in the last year with lots of blood, sweat and tears and screaming. It's very, very difficult to take four different transportation providers and, and try to marry their routes together so that they're all in one place at one time. So what happens here at the Columbia Area Transit Center is that the buses pulse, so they all arrive at the same time. The, their passengers get out and those who are making transfers can transfer right to the, to the next bus. So it's, it's working really, really well now. Next slide. All right, our riders. So the most important part of the regional transit system is our riders. Next slide. We've got, we gave 200,000 rides last year and we are just increasing in rides. So as you can see in the next two slides, here's the regional system, just going up in ridership, really recovered from the pandemic, and here's the Link Public Transportation System. So, so lots of riders, I ride the bus a lot, doing onboard surveys, I ride the bus in every single county. And most of our riders are actually going to work. So they are, they're students who are maybe cognitively impaired. These are people who will never drive and they are getting their first summer job. So, so that's one story we hear a lot. There are people, I just think about the one guy I met in Cascade Locks going to work at Walmart in Hood River. And he thought the Gorge Transit Pass was the best thing the Gorge has ever produced. So, so just a lot of people just getting to work, just doing their everyday things. Especially between Hood River and the Dows. Next slide.
Okay, number three, Equity Fund. We're very excited about this. We've set up a 501(c)(3) so that a dollar of every Gorge Pass goes into this Equity Fund and allows us to buy passes for low-income programs. The other thing that Kathy brought up is that we have an employer sales buy one give one. So employers in the area or in Portland, if they buy at least 10 passes for their employees, we give free passes to those in need, folks who need the passes. So that's just a really great way to give people their independence and their freedom. Number four, dogs. You can take your dogs on the bus, on all of the buses in the Gorge. So you can take them to one of the 20 trailheads that you can reach, long as they're on a leash. Five, bikes. Bike plus bus is a magical marriage. So you can throw your bike on any of the buses in the Gorge and you can get to, again, we have a map of all of the trails that you can get to bike trails by bus. So these are the ones that you can get to by bus. And as you know, biking contributes 133 billion annually as a major economic driver. And you know this in the Dows because very soon, that lovely, lovely trail that goes all the way from Portland to the Dows will be finished. And all of those riders will end up with lots of money in the Dows. So we love bikes plus, plus buses. Number six is accessibility. Buses are all ADA accessible in the Gorge. And so it's amazing way for folks to travel. And all of the drivers, by the way, are also trained. So the other thing that you may not know is that accessible or disabled travel is a $58 million industry. And Travel Oregon will be focused heavily on this in the next couple of years. We're actually already ahead of the game in the Gorge. We have a website called Accessible Gorge where folks can look up ahead of time restaurants, trailheads, museums, et cetera, so they can know the accessibility of any of those places and they can plan ahead. So, again, we are really looking forward to having folks with disabilities visit with, with, and be, being ready for that, especially with the bus system. We actually got an award for this, by the way. And there's lots more information on this coming, so we're excited about this area. Number seven, cost. How much does it cost to have a car every year? Do, do any of you know? It's $10,000. Yeah, $10,000 a year to have, to own our cars. So if you have a second car, you might want to think about other ways of saving that money because it's 72 cents a mile. Here's how it breaks down. So, thinking of 72 cents a mile, if you go to the Dows from, the Dows, to the, to Hood River from the Dows, that's a $31 round trip or just a dollar each way by transit. Goldendale's $52 round trip, dollar each way. Or if you go into the, to the VA Hospital, for example, in Portland, or the airport, which is, by the way, quicker, easier, cheaper, faster than parking in long-term parking, it's $120 round trip. And that doesn't even include the parking. So by bus, it's only $40 a year. And then we know that there's over 6,000 commuters that go from the Dows to Portland or Hood River. Those folks could be saving $668 each month. What would you do with an extra almost $700 a month? Think about that if you're commuting to Hood River. Number eight, as Kathy kind of mentioned, we have lots of programs that we've been developing which are giving passes to high school students, passes to downtown workers, as you know, and then also getting folks, kids who are, don't, aren't old enough to drive yet, but are old enough to be independent. So middle schoolers, we have some programs coming up this summer that we're excited about sharing with you later that Jesus can share, but basically getting kids on buses. And then finally, no, not finally, nine, travel trainers. Travel trainers, we have two travel trainers in the Gorge now who are rock stars. They are amazing. They can help you just like understand how to, to transfer, read a schedule. They take folks out on trips. They get, they do a lot of amazing outreach into our most vulnerable populations and they just get them comfortable. And again, increasing freedom and independence. And then finally, future. There's a couple of things we wanted to share really quick. There's so much coming up, but really quick, three things. One is that we are very close to having the loop completed with a route through Lyle into the Dows. We have a, we've been struggling with, we've been fighting with other, with the Google, with the Google app. And so we've created our own and we now, you can easily just put where you want to go, where you are, and boom, you can see all the transfers. And then the other thing that we really wanted to talk to you, the council, about is on April 10, we have a Gorge Transit Summit. If you do not currently think that transit is riveting, how dare you? We challenge you to come to this day and we promise we will change your mind. This is going to be an incredibly fun day with keynote speakers from international level. We have hands-on workshops. We have, we have game shows with writers. We have panels about all the ways that transit solves your most, your most stickiest issues here in the Gorge, including housing and other things like that. So please, look for your, this email invitation in your, in your inboxes soon and mark April 10 a free to come join us. Okay, so those are top 10 lists. We're going to end with a very short video, kind of summarizing some of the benefits of transit in the Gorge. Thank you for listening and here we go.
Thank you. Jesus, is there anything you want to add? I know we're, we might be at time. Okay.
No, everything's covered. We'll open up for any questions, if there's any.
Anybody have any questions for the three representatives? How are you all doing with recruiting bus drivers? Is that a difficult task?
It's always been, yeah, it comes in waves. I think we're doing very, I think for the most part, I know Kat has 17 drivers on staff right now. I think the Link is fully staffed with drivers and the other counties as well. So it's not, it's not the, the real pressing issue that it was a couple of years ago.
Good. Anybody else?
Do I understand correctly, you give rides for free to people headed for the emergency weather shelter at the Gloria Center?
We do. The Link does.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Yeah, correct. That was just announced earlier today. So if you're on the McCaff partner list, you should receive that email, but we're also announcing it on our social media website.
Great. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to add that we have a longstanding partnership with, with McCaff and Link. We have a financial partnership as well. I believe they've submitted again for the upcoming budget cycle, so that'll be coming back to council. And I think this is why some of this information is helpful. And it was a pleasure to, to work with you and your team to develop the free downtown bus pass arrangement for employees and residents downtown. I think that's going to be really beneficial.
Yeah, our, our survey that we did just recently, we asked people why they wanted to participate in the program and they said the, the top answer was because of community connectivity, which was really cool to hear for the Dows. Absolutely. And you do, you meet your community on the bus.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jesus. And Emily, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item 5B is we're at presentation from the city staff about the Historic Landmarks Commission. If you could introduce yourself.
Thank you, Mayor and council members for the record. Sandy Freund, I'm the senior planner with the City of the Dows Planning Department and the HLC Coordinator. At the January 22th HLC meeting, the commission members agreed upon the 2025 goals, which you should have in your packet. They discussed them in detail at their November 2024 meeting. The goals are broken into short-term, one to two years, and continuous goals. I've categorized the short-term goals into five overarching projects or topics, rather. Instead of reading each goal to you, which I think would be monotonous, I will just go over the, the overarching one to two-year short-term goals. And those are to update and improve the standards. We would like to update Chapter 11, our Historic Resources Chapter in the Dows Municipal Code, to provide clear and objective standards. That way, we're in compliance with state law for clear and objective standards. We'd like to increase representation. The HLC would like to advocate for student representative to be on the HLC. A preservation plan. We would like to apply for grant to develop a preservation plan for the Dows. Research historical significance of some key sites such as Rock House and Rock Fort and the former railroad structures that are along East Second Street, excuse me. We would like to promote community engagement by developing and installing new historic building plaques throughout the Dows and support tours of historic properties, including Pioneer Cemetery. And the last overarching topic would be to preserve and restore, oh, the key sites, which I mentioned, I'm sorry, encourage restoration of the Pioneer Cemetery and the Waldron Getchell Building windows. Also, update the historic inventories and nominate new properties to the local and national registries. Also, for accomplishments, this last year, 2024, we did process and approve three applications. One was for the Sigmund's Flowers Building. And recently, updates to the Old American Legion Building, historically known as the Shallow Building. And also the Fort Dows Museum, they applied for approval to replace the shed that houses the historic wagons, which is actually number 24 on the long-term continuous goals. So that's nice to cross something off on the long-term goals. What else? I think that's about it. I'm open if you have any questions or want to discuss anything further. Thank you.
Any questions for Sandy?
I just have one comment, actually. And just food for thought, which is also historic in our town, are a number of large trees, mostly, or maybe most strikingly, the sycamores, which were planted plus or minus 150 years ago. I would encourage that. I would encourage that to be maybe a topic of discussion at some point. It's not built environment, but it is sort of intentional. And obviously, like something historic, once lost, not easily replaced or never replaced. Yeah.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
I was wondering if number six on the short term goals about the Pioneer Cemetery. It says establish an inventory available, and you had mentioned that. What, what exactly is an inventory of?
Well, I'm not certain entirely in my understanding, and I might defer to Josh on this, as if we can get some help to create on our website an inventory of the center and perhaps who's there. I'm not sure, but I want to defer to Josh on answer that in more detail.
Yep, yep. Council Joshua Chandler, Community Development Department. Yeah, so that is what the update there would be. We have an old and old preservation plan from the cemetery. I think it dates early two thousands. So there is a list of the individuals, the families buried there, significant members of our community dating years and years ago. So it would be kind of an update to that. Maybe, you know, we can brush it off and make sure that we have that accurate information and easily available, easily navigable to the site.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the staff?
Just comments that I appreciate the care given to the Pioneer Cemetery. Over the years, it's been up and down as far, but the crew that you've had up there have been just wonderful.
Yeah, I would have to thank the city's facilities division for that. So, you know, they've been doing a great job at that in the past couple of years now. So thank you.
It's really evident.
Okay, thanks a lot. Five C, this is a report from our city manager regarding the Federal Street Plaza update and the open house that's coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We have a short presentation that we're going to pull up here. In essence, included in your packet is a more detailed presentation with additional slides and renderings of the proposed plaza and different variations and configurations. But for tonight, I'm just going to take a highlight of those. The main thing I wanted to deliver tonight to you this evening and to the community and anybody watching is that there will be an open house this coming Wednesday at five thirty at Free Bridge, where the committee members and the consultants from Walker Macy will be present to solicit feedback and engage the community on the two designs that we'll be looking at tonight, probably reviewing briefly, to get the feedback, what people like, what people may want to see different and help us land on a final design. The ad hoc committee that was established by this council has been meeting very, very frequently and diligently working on moving this project forward. And ideally, we hope to have a final design, I'd say, within the next month or so, and work on cost estimates so we can then continue to do our budgeting work for the upcoming season. So if there are any comments from any of the committee members or the city councilors who are on the committee at the end of this presentation, I would invite you to certainly offer those. The first concept here that we're looking at is River City. And again, this is not the Tony's site, which is an effort that the Urban Renewal Agency has been leading. This is on Federal Street between Second and First. And so this will involve or require the closure of Federal Street. What we intend to do is to vacate that street and create it, create a property or a parcel for this plaza. And it will involve the closure of that street from Second to Third. So we will lose the parking on Second Street to make space for this plaza. A lot of the different elements here for this first design, River City, focused on some of the different shade structures with porch swings, a seating, some kind of splash pad area in the center, as you see there. And both designs incorporate what's called a bike hub. Now, the bike hubs are something that we are coordinating with the Columbia Gorge Scenic Bike Trail. And several other communities have these bike hubs already, Cascade Locks, Hood River, Mosher. And there's a consistent themes or signage associated with this international travel destination that the bike hub is intended to be. You'll see that in the bottom right of this first scheme that we have here by the transportation building. The bike hub, we have, currently, we have dated designs from a concept that was going to go in the Lewis and Clark Park. But we feel that this plaza is a better location. And with the completion of the first street streetscaping project, again, another project by the Urban Renewal Agency, will provide a strong link between the riverfront trail and our riverfront, up through the Union Street underpass, down First Street, and then into the very heart of our downtown. You'll see that there's a lot of different greenery, some screening and movable chairs and, and tables that will be part of this plaza. One of the key discussion points at the last committee meeting was what would go in the transportation building. And there's a real interest in making sure that whatever goes into the transportation building is an active use that will contribute to the plaza and will help us keep, you know, our eyes on the plaza and make sure that it's taken care of and remains a very positive public space. Next slide. For this first design, again, called River City, these were some of the design elements from other plazas that we looked at. So you'll see the kind of pergola style awning on the top left, combined with the swing seating and the upper center picture. Again, a lot of discussion about different types of water features, basalt rock seating and lighting. Next slide. Here's a three D rendering of what the proposed plaza could look like. I believe this one is looking from within the plaza towards Second Street. Next slide. In the other direction there, it's somewhat faint, but kind of in the center of this photo, you can see where this concept of a splash pad. And I'll, I'll be very detailed here. I think when we talk about the concept of a splash pad, we're not talking about a splash pad that we see at Thompson Park near the pool, where there are, you know, various splash features and structures, really looking at this to be kind of a more flat, no standing water kind of, kind of feature. It's at the center of the plaza where the alleyway is. And so we want to make sure that there's the needed access for any kind of emergency response or anytime we need to open up the plaza a bit more. Some of these renderings here show how the plaza could be used in a couple of different ways. One thing that the committee was very mindful of is not too, too far away. We have the Lewis and Clark Festival Park, which is more designed for the larger scale events, concerts that you may see. But as you can see in this design, there's still a decent amount of space in this plaza to do some of those smaller events. In this concept here, there's a blown up movie screen of some kind and about four thousand square feet there for, for seating, spot for a food truck and some event support. This one's just a little bit different and it shows those pergolas, like I mentioned a moment ago, with a, I think it says thirty by sixty event tent and a stage. The second design that we have from our consultants is called Basalt. It's very similar, but very different. And so actually, I think what we can do here is kind of skip to the next slide. One of the most defining differences in this scheme was the use of canopies, which has had a mixed reaction from a maintenance and long term care perspective. But we're very cognizant of the amount of sun that the Dells gets in a given year. It's one of our greatest assets, but it can be a little hot at times. There's been a lot of focus on the downtown, the tree environment in this plaza and how else we may create these shaded spaces. Again, these were some of the design elements, giving inspiration to some of these different designs. Again, the incorporation of basalt rock and seating into the splash pad feature itself. And again, some of the lighting and benches. Next slide. Excellent. Again, showing the different configurations for how the plaza itself might be used for special events. I think that's our last one. So I wanted to take this opportunity to update the council on the work the ad hoc committee has done to date and to invite everybody who's listening and to help us share the word on the open house this coming Wednesday, five thirty at Free Bridge. We also have a webpage dedicated to this project and there is an active survey available right now that you're more than welcome to fill out, whether or not you're attending the open house on Wednesday. We've gotten some thirty nine responses to the survey so far. And just kind of breaking it down, there was some, in time, kind of the tone or topic that we've been hearing about is, you know, as I mentioned, a real interest in providing sufficient shade and greenery in the plaza, some concern about the loss of parking and accessibility, the sustainability and long term maintenance components of a plaza, event space and vendor considerations, making sure that there's strong community engagement and there's an aesthetic appeal here to what we have in the plaza and making sure that it fits with our community. And some, some additional clarity that we'll need to have through this process, that this is not the Tony's site. This is Federal Street between Second and First. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? I'd just like to recognize the committee that was appointed. That I, I actually had suggested to the city council, they were approved a few months ago. Two of them are in the, members of the city council, Dan Richardson and Ben Ring. And we also had Beth Stelzer, who's the owner of the Farm Stand, that new grocery store and other amenities on Third Street. Marcus Swift, who's on our Urban Renewal and Park District Boards. Steve Light, who's the owner of Free Bridge Brewery and is also going to be hosting the open house that the city manager mentioned, Kristin Lilovic, also on Urban Renewal. And it's a great committee. We've been working very hard. I think we've had seven public meetings and we're off and running. So hopefully we'll get a good turnout on February twelfth at Free Bridge. Did you have a comment?
Just a very brief comment, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for that. Just for those who are listening and for maximum clarity, it is a come and go as you please, open house, so you don't have to be there at five thirty. You can get there pretty much anytime you want in the next hour and a half and just take a look at designs, offer comments and ask any questions.
Anybody else? Okay, thank you, Matthew. Okay. Lisa Farquharson, oh, I got to read my spiel first, Lisa, sorry. During this portion of the meeting, anyone may speak on any subject, which is not later appear on the agenda. Up to three minutes per person will be allowed. Citizens are encouraged to ask questions with the understanding that the city can either answer the question tonight or refer that question to the appropriate staff member who will get back to you within a reasonable amount of time. If a response by the city is requested, the speaker will be referred to the city manager for further action. The issue may appear on a future meeting agenda for a city council consideration. We have one person signed up to speak and that is Lisa Farquharson from the Chamber of Commerce.
We'll try that again. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to keep this short and sweet. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update of some of the activities that we've done and things that we're headed to for tourism. So one, we just completed the Explore Local campaign with K E T U. They were featuring eight different local businesses with interviews. They were in the morning show and the afternoon show, one per week, along with fifteen second commercials all the way throughout the week announcing that we would be on that show. So we just completed that campaign. What we did is we reused the footage that we had done the year before. It was still applicable and it saved us twenty grand. So these are not cheap campaigns, but it's in the Portland market where we can get people for just an hour and twenty minutes this direction. So we just completed that. And then we are headed tomorrow, that's why I'm keeping this short, to the Sportsman Show in Portland. It is the twelfth through the sixteenth, and then we'll be in Central Oregon, the sixth through the ninth. We're doing it just a little bit different this year. Our businesses are running the booth. I am not. And so the chamber has paid for the booth through the tourism contract funds and sending all of our backgrounds and everything with it. And then we have, Rivertap is being our feet on the ground and in charge. We will be featuring five businesses in Portland and we're still working on our businesses in Redmond. They're getting an opportunity to showcase either their service, their product or what they have maybe for events coming up while they're in the booth. So they're having, they're going to have a blast and so they'll be doing that. And we'll give away some trinkets, but we've scaled it way back as far as some of those expenditures, just so we can do this because everything has doubled in price. So we'll be doing that. So I am looking for some people for Redmond. If you want to go, just let me know. We are also, just wanted to let you know that in May, the second through the fourth, we will be hosting the Northwest Outdoor Writers, as in a magazine publication association. There will be about twenty to twenty five. They'll be doing a fam tour for three days while they're having their conference here hosted in the Dells. So we'll be working with them and taking them around town. They represent over thirty different publications in which they either contract or they're freelancing and they work with them. So we're looking for some articles that will be featuring our community after that. The Bass Tournament also, the came last year for the first time, the Drain Raider Bass Tournament. It was for four months for the qualifiers and then they had their champion and boardman. So they'll be once again coming. They'll be here in June, July, August and September. And they do a two day tournament, so they usually are spending two nights each. And they're intentional. I don't know what you want to call it. They're very intentional about supporting us local. So they make sure they encourage all of their guys to be eating out, supporting our community, purchasing their goods, staying in our local hotels. And in their, they're pretty supportive of that, plus their Drain Raider team and their, all their social medias are always referencing and tagging their different sponsors and businesses that have worked with them in the Dells. So we're getting a lot of exposure there. I think that's it on that piece of it. Any questions?
Any questions for Lisa?
All right, thanks. You guys have fun.
Guys are really busy. Okay, item seven is the city manager's report. Mr. Cleaves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A number of items for you this evening, so I appreciate your patience and bear with me here. One of the things is I wanted to make sure the council was ahead, had a heads up that the police department's CAD RMS project in partnership with Wasco County in Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue is moving forward. Wasco County has point on that process and has been going through a procurement process in close consultation with our police department and the fire department for several months now. And it looks like that project is getting close to moving forward. This is a substantial upgrade over our current system and there's a lot of catch up here. This is a big jump for us on the system that we currently have to a very modern system. And so it will come with a significant cost, but it's something that needs to happen. We need to get caught up with the tools and software that we're using. And the work to date has really prioritized this. So this is something we'll be working through in the upcoming budget process. If you have additional questions for me, please let me know. But wanted to give everybody a heads up that this was coming down the pipeline. Connect somewhat connected to this, I wanted to pass along a report from our police chief on the annual calls for service that we've been getting. And so in twenty twenty three, we had twenty one thousand eight hundred and ninety calls for service. And in twenty twenty four, there was eighteen thousand four hundred and fifty five. Now, a lot of this was because of the good work and efforts of our police department. But we also attribute a lot of this decrease in calls to improvements along Pentland Street. And so that's an important thing I wanted to highlight for the city council. And this is important to the nine one one partnership that we have with Wasco County and Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue, because a lot of the breakdown in how we pay for those services is based on call volume. So depending on what agency has a particular call, goes into some of the methodology that we have on the, the split or the share that each, each agency or each entity pays into nine one one. So a reduction in calls there is really important for a number of reasons. And want to give good kudos and appreciation to our police department for all the work that they've been doing on that front. The second item I had here was actually trying to look into the future just a little bit. We went through this process last year, but any feedback or direction from council around fireworks? This is something that council has asked me to bring back on an annual basis. We try and time some of this conversation as to when Mid Columbia Fire and Rescue begin issuing burning permits or, or associated with their burn ban practices. And, you know, I've brought this forward earlier in the year. We've had discussions right at the last minute and it can be difficult at times and, and communicating some of the information if we put it out too soon. And, you know, some entities may be purchasing fireworks as fundraisers to, to sell. And, you know, a potential ban on fireworks may impact some of those operations. And so really, I'm just here this evening to get any kind of consensus direction from the council on if you'd like this as a discussion item sooner rather than later, or wait later until the end of the year or, or more kind of what there. until the end of the year or, or more kind of what there. Any, any feedback there?
I would think if, were you gonna say it? Go ahead.
Well, for my part, I would say sooner rather than later. And it would be really helpful to see what the impact or context was from last year. If we had a huge number of complaints or problems or unintended consequences or, or not.
I would tend to agree with that. Anybody else?
In agreement with that.
Okay, I see nodding of heads, so.
Great. That, that's helpful and moving forward. Another update I wanted to provide is we are very close to having the transient, the Tourism Promotion Services contract procurement documents ready. I hope to have those out by the middle of this month, likely next week. Have that out for about 30 days or so. And then we've already established an ad hoc review committee to review those proposals. So that's moving forward. I was on the radio show with Mark Bailey this morning about the plaza and the upcoming open house in KODL last week with Dave Anderson, our Public Works Director. And we, later this Friday, we have final Public Work Director interviews. As we all know, Dave Anderson is retiring. And so we have three candidates we'll be looking at this coming Friday. I have an update on City Day, but I'd like to leave that to Councilor Runyon and Mayor Mays to report on. And then my last item was just to let the community know that with the temperatures dropping, the Glorious Center has opened emergency operations for this evening. And with that, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Itemated city council reports, we'll start with the just mentioned Councilor Rod Runyon.
Well, good evening, everyone. Actually, I was going to let the mayor and city manager talk about that. I think I said so on my notes. And did Amy provide each of the councilors with a envelope?
Yes, she is running out of the room as we speak.
So present from the League of Oregon Cities inside each envelope, which we'll have out there in a moment. Oh, there they come, their names on those envelopes. So it's important they go to the right places, you know, so some might be very different.
It's not cash. This is.
It's not? What happened to the money? That's a question that's often asked in our city. Actually, I was appointed to the Community Outreach Team for this coming year, something that I've been involved with when I was with the county. And I missed the first meeting at the college because the mayor and city manager invited me to go to Salem. And basically they had three appointments lined up. I seem to remember that I know a lot of people in Salem and so I sent out some emails. We ended up with, I think, seven senators and representatives that we were able to visit with. We had others calling to us in the hallways, we walked along. And so we got to meet a lot of people to spread some of the issues that we have upcoming for the city of the Dells, including the Sixth Street Bridge, which was probably the number one topic as we're in need of some help with that bridge due to the, the recent downgrade in weight and so forth that's allowed over the bridge. I'm not an expert on that. Matthew talked about that a little bit. But anyway, just some gifts there. And the main thing of the gifts, a little pen and a League of Oregon Cities socks, which actually that idea, they had them there, but it was Matthew saying, hey, he had a pair of those. And so I thought you all should have them as well, so. But the whole point is that when you get an opportunity, whether it's League of Oregon Cities events or other events around the Mid-Columbia that might impact or give you an opportunity to talk about things that are important to residents in city and county, take advantage of it, you know. As our reach gets out there and expands, it really helps that the community, not just from our city council meetings, but it really helps when you're out there in the community talking to different organizations and so forth about what we do here. And we are basically all volunteers too, and people forget that. We get a little bit of money for fuel and so forth, but, you know, it's, it's really not like a, like a job. It's, but it is a job in terms of how we each individually do our city council positions and, and make things work. So you all do a great job. Glad to have Ben on board. And I'd like to see some other councilors involved with the Community Outreach Team this year for different things that come along. And thank you, Tim, for taking my spot on the very first meeting in town that I missed.
Okay. Thank you, Councilor Runyon. Next, we'll go to the just mentioned President Counselor Tim McLaughlin.
Well, yes, Councilor Runyon, I did cover that outreach meeting at the college. And it was very interesting, by the way. And it was discussing the outreach to Washington DC and as you were attending an outreach project to the state legislature and so that we can have connection with the state and federal. We, I do have an upcoming Airport Commission meeting Friday. I don't know the exact date, but not this week, 21st. Okay. And been receiving many inquiries about homelessness requests for housing. So it's awfully beneficial to be able to say and divert people to the Glorious Center or the annex. And I'd like to do a shout out to Kenny LaPointe for his legacy in providing those. And he was instrumental in creating that environment for our citizens here. And they're doing a terrific job in helping in the homeless issue. I'm also receiving a lot of contact about NORCOR and policies concerning ICE. And just understand the city is independent, even though we were still citizens and community. But that is, Wasco County is the one that managed the NORCOR. I'd also like to point out that I recently found out that we have four cameras installed at Kelly Avenue Viewpoint recently. And the intent is to help protect children. By the way, look at the new playground at Sarosis Park. It's impressive and it's a great place, safe place for kids to play. And with the added security, I think we'll, we'll do our best to make sure kids are safe. Also, it's a little bit preventative to keep, like I, I've never done anything as a, as a youth and 17 years old that I've done, doing any foolish things. But sometimes kids that age will, it's, it's a hangout place in the evening and we don't want to take that away, but we also want to make sure that things are safe and sane at the Kelly Viewpoint. So we're working, the cameras will help us in that effort. That's my report for this week.
Thank you. Councilor Ring?
Thank you, Mayor. I attended a Federal Street Plaza meeting the end of January on the 29th. And then this Wednesday, of course, is the open house. It's already been mentioned on Wednesday night at Free Bridge. One of the other, not so much meeting that I've necessarily had, but one thing I would like to ask the rest of the city council members is I've been considering sort of rekindling what our mayor had started pre-COVID with kind of a coffee hour once a month where we obviously don't have a necessarily quorum of councilors, but maybe the mayor and a counselor or two show up on a Saturday and just schedule a meeting for people to come and meet with us and share concerns or opinions or just have a simple discussion. Just for thoughts and whether or not city council members think it's good.
I would be willing to do that.
That's a good idea.
Thanks.
Good idea.
Yeah, just to refresh some of your memories, because this, when I first got elected, it was in 2019 and I did this, it was called the Second Saturday with the Mayor and we rotated restaurants and mostly in the downtown area. We did about five or six of them and then COVID hit and pretty well put a kibosh on the Second Saturday with the Mayor idea. And I, it has not been resurrected and with Councilor Ring's election and his willingness to reach out to the community in different ways, I thought this might be a good way to get this going again. And so there you go. Anything else? Okay. Councilor Randall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one item. On February 4th, I attended my first meeting of the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council. They discussed various items, among them grant funding, potential grant funding sources and the Resolution Center, the proposed Resolution Center. This is my first meeting, so I'm just kind of getting acclimated into the, the subject matter. If anyone's interested, the next meeting is on April 1st. They meet at the, the county building on Third Street and it begins at 11:30. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilor Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Attended a Federal Street Plaza meeting that's already been discussed and will be there on Wednesday. Helped pass out a few posters around downtown for people to have opportunity to comment on those. I'd like to just note again that our partners at McCack have a warming shelter open. It's just, it's a real service to our community. And they're also going through, as Counselor McLaughlin alluded to, a leadership transition. And I would encourage us, our city manager perhaps, to be, if not already, then to make a point to reach out and see if there's anything we can do to support that community partner of ours. And that's what I've got.
Thank you. As far as my report goes, on January 27th, I gave a radio interview to Mark Bailey at KACI. And on February 6th, I gave a presentation to the Chamber of Commerce's Community Affairs Committee. I'm also looking for people to serve on the Beautification and Treat Committee where we do have an opening on there. So as I scan the audience, I see a lot of faces that perhaps might be interested in that. So don't rush up at the end of the meeting. Please stand in line orderly. Final, let's see, Councilor Runyon mentioned the trip to Salem for City Day about two weeks ago. And I think it was a very worthwhile event. And I think the city manager and I would agree that what was a worthwhile event potentially turned into a great event because of Councilor Runyon's contacts and his efforts to increase the number of people we were able to meet with. As he mentioned, we had three scheduled and we ended up, by my count, we ended up with eight legislative senators and representatives that we met with. And what I, like I say, what was originally sort of a worthwhile event really turned into a great success and I applaud Councilor Runyon's efforts in making it that way. Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you.
Finally, our city clerk has come up with a great idea to engage youth and students with city government. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to her so she can talk a little bit about it.
Well, I'm not going to take credit for the idea because it comes from the Oregon Mayor Association. Recently, last week, I presented to some middle school students in the Dells, at the Dells Middle School. I was asked to come in to share about local government. And now they all know your faces, by the way. So if you have some little ones approaching you, they may have some things they need to say to you. And this contest that is organized by the Oregon Mayor Association yearly is called If I Were Mayor. It is another way to let students get engaged with local government, to inspire them to be future leaders and to know they have a voice and they are heard. The contest has three categories in three different grade sections. The fourth and fifth grade has a poster contest where they create a poster saying what they would do if they were mayor. Grades six through eight are essay contests. And grades nine through 12 is a digital, digital media presentation, video, podcasts, a variety of different options there. So we have a local contest and you may have received a copy of the press release that went out for this, this afternoon. Locally, we will be awarding our students that submit a first, second and third prize in each category on April 28th here at city council. Before the city council meeting, we'll have a reception where those students can meet with council and the mayor. Maybe they can sit at the dais and get some pictures taken, ask you some questions. There's prizes for this as well. So if you can encourage the students by letting them know first place is $100, second place is 50, and third place is 25. All the first place winners will automatically be submitted to the state Oregon Mayor Association contest. And that contest is going to, I believe they're going to be awarded at the Oregon Mayor Association Conference, which is in Baker?
July or August.
Yeah, it's, it's late. It's in the summer and I think it's in Baker this year. There's even greater prize money for those. If you know anyone that might be interested, I've created a webpage on our website for this. It's thedolls.org/ifywaremer. Or you can direct them to contact me.
Thank you, Amy. That's a great idea. Like you say, it was originated by the Oregon Mayors Association, but Amy's picked it up and made it part of the, the Dallas reality. So that's great. Okay. We're going to move along now to Consent Agenda. Items of a routine and non-controversial nature are placed on the consent agenda to allow the city council to spend its time and energy on the more important items and issues. Any counselor may request an item be pulled from the consent agenda and be considered separately. Items pulled from the consent agenda will be placed on the agenda at the end of the Action Items section. Tonight, we only have one item on the consent agenda and that is approval of the January 27th City Council Meeting Minutes. I have a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent, consent agenda.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Councilor Ring and seconded by Councilor Richardson to approve the consent agenda. Is there any questions or comments? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Item 10A is an ordinance amending the Dallas Municipal Code, Chapter 6 regarding traffic control. Mr. Kara?
Thank you, Mayor Mays. This is a co-presentation from the city attorney and the codes enforcement officer, Nikki Lessich, who I'd like to invite up to take her rightful place, not on the dais, but right in front of us, so she can give it to us straight. So from time to time, Nikki works, well, Nikki works more than from just time to time, but the city's codes enforcement division coordinates with the city attorney's office and we, we sort of tag team one of these ordinance amendments. We bring them over to, well, we ruminate over them and we marinate on them and we try to time them strategically. And tonight here, we're, we're talking about parking enforcement. I prepared an ordinance amending certain provisions of our code, Chapter 6.04, Traffic Control, to address at least some generally legal sufficiency issues and some day-to-day administrative improvements to enhance the livability of our community and the enforcement of some of our parking regulations. Those amendments are listed in the staff report on page 51 of your packet. There are four major changes and Nikki's here to answer any technical questions that you might have connected with them. Generally, I'll just go down the list for these four. We have motor vehicles currently and the, the code is not amending anything to do with motor vehicles for number one, but currently motor vehicles that are posted with a tow notice can still be towed under our code, even if the person moves their vehicle either down the road or onto private property, once they've been tagged. And so the proposed ordinance authorizes the city to similarly tow boats that are placed on trailers, trailers themselves, and oversized vehicles that also move down the road or onto private property after they've been posted with a tow notice. Number two, currently, our code imposes a duty on the municipal court, which is another way to say it requires the municipal court to send what's known as a pre-towing notice to certain people. Those are the people that either fail to pay or make arrangements to pay for their traffic fines within 10 days from the day that their judgment is imposed on them from the municipal court. And so the proposed amendment, first of all, makes that mandatory requirement optional. And so it gives some discretion on a case-by-case basis as needed. And secondly, it authorizes the codes enforcement division itself, as opposed to the municipal court, to send that, you know, hopefully optional pre-towing notice in certain situations. The third change, currently, a police officer may issue a citation and tow an unlawfully parked vehicle if that vehicle also has five unpaid parking violations against it. The proposed ordinance expands that authorization. The proposed ordinance expands that authorization to allow not just sworn officers, but the codes enforcement division to enforce that particular standard. And it, secondly, reduces the number of unpaid parking violations that are needed before towing from five to two. Fourth, the proposed amendment clarifies that vehicles that are parked in violation of no parking signs or 15-minute parking in excess of 15 minutes and signs of that nature that are lawfully put up on the public right-of-way, we clarify that those vehicles are considered hazards or obstructions to traffic. And that's a technical term in the Oregon Vehicle Code. If a vehicle is considered a hazard or an obstruction, then certain tow provisions apply, and staff's recommendation is to have those certain standards apply to vehicles that are parked in violation of otherwise lawful no parking or time-limited signs. This would be a great time to ask Nikki any questions, if you have any, and then I had one final follow-up, if there are none or after those questions.
Any questions for Ms. Lessig? Counsel Randall.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have the question on the first issue about towing after they've, or if they've been moved down the road or onto private property. Isn't the intent for the tow notice to have them move it? Am I confused about that, or?
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Counsel. It is the intention, the purpose of it is to drive them to move it. The violations are usually expired tags, flat tires, storing garbage, broken windows, things like that. So even if they do move it onto their own property, it still is considered junk with the junk and the garbage in the back of their pickup, or broken windows or flat tires. Moving it does not, does not fix the violation as far as expired tags.
Okay. Thanks.
Other questions for Ms. Lessig? Want to proceed, Mr. Kara?
Yeah. So staff's recommendations on page 52 of the packet, I'd like to revise it. After the packet was published, Nikki and I had some follow-up conversations, and we took an even closer look at our code and recognized that similar to number three here in the staff report, where we expanded the authorization to allow the codes enforcement division to enforce certain provisions or that specific provision connected with number three, we noticed that there are other instances in Chapter 6.04 that are similarly limited at the moment, where it says, you know, an officer may or an officer shall. This code was initially adopted in 1992, and I don't believe that the city had a codes enforcement division in 1992. And so since a significant portion, if not all, of the city's current traffic control is administered by the codes enforcement division, I'd like to recommend a different motion to change, in addition to the four proposed changes here, perhaps, you know, you can think of it as a fifth proposed change, which would be to change as appropriate and as lawful, all references to an officer in Chapter 6.04 to include the codes enforcement division. This is a legal sufficiency issue on one hand, because, you know, arguably, there's, there can be somebody out there who says, "Well, you gave me a ticket like the code says, but you're not an officer," and we just sort of want to nip that argument in the bud, because Nikki is not a sworn officer, and our codes enforcement division doesn't comprise sworn officers, but they certainly are in the City of the Dallas Police Department. And since they'll be, you know, handling the bulk of the enforcement here, my recommendation is to make all lawful changes, or make all changes that are lawful to Chapter 6.04 to be comprehensive in the sense that they would include the codes enforcement division as being the city staff person authorized to enforce it. And so with that change, which I can prepare tomorrow and have it prepared for the mayor's signature if this gets adopted here tonight, it doesn't require re-noticing or a second hearing if the motion is passed unanimously. And so again, my recommendation, and I wrote down a new motion for any counselor who wishes to make it, that I would recommend here tonight, and I'm revising my staff recommendation to allow that expansion.
Counsel Ring.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, what is the legality between having a, like, naming a sworn officer to do, you know, to execute a duty versus somebody like our codes enforcement team?
Yeah. So the, you know, an argument, as I mentioned, would be if somebody's issued a, let's say, a parking citation by Nikki or Chris, that they could come into municipal court when their court date is indicated at the bottom of the ticket, and they could make an argument that says, "Well, your code says an officer can do this, and you're not an officer, so you can't do this." And so I think that sort of frustrates the purpose of the ordinance itself. And again, it was last amended in 1992, and so we're just trying to bring it up to speed to ensure that the city's codes enforcement division has all the tools that it needs to do this job.
Okay, and would you expect this to change any other portions of the municipal code that, that would include duties that we might have the codes enforcement team do other than just what's in here for the traffic?
No, I mean, the intent here, we're amending Chapter 6.04, which is strictly about traffic control. And so it's not like it's authorizing the codes enforcement division with any duties that, you know, are reserved for sworn officers under Oregon law. And so again, the, you know, my recommended changes would be to simply go through Chapter 6.04 and to prepare a final ordinance for the mayor's signature that simply, you know, as lawful enhances the codes enforcement division's authority and revises the definition of an officer to simply include a codes enforcement division officer. Yep.
Another follow-up question. What's the, I guess, what's the purpose or reason for changing from, changing from five to two violations of, or more of unpaid violations outstanding?
Yeah. Nikki?
Thank you. Increasingly, and particularly this past year, but it has been increasing over the past several years, we've had instances where they're parking in the yellow zone and really totally blocking the clear vision for motorists, and then repeatedly doing it again and again because they, it's, to them, the $25 ticket doesn't, isn't encouragement enough for them to follow the rules, or they're blocking alleyways for delivery for services like garbage or for deliveries, other kinds of services, and repeatedly have just parked there just over and over and not complying. If you have a home, in particular, there's one case where they have several vehicles, like five vehicles, and they keep rotating them so that they each get a ticket, you'd end up having to issue 25 tickets before you actually get to tow a vehicle. In the meantime, this particular end of the alleyway is not a through alley, so there's not like they can come from another end, another access, so they're not getting their supplies delivered, they're not getting their garbage service, and the rest of the community in that area is very frustrated on this particular case. But it has been increasingly a problem. So to be able to go to the two tickets and then tow, I think it would only take one time in each one of these instances that they would want to comply after that.
And that's an excellent point, and I just want to clarify that this particular provision, the reduction from five to two, only really applies if a car is currently unlawfully parked. And so if you have two unpaid parking tickets, for example, and you're parked lawfully, this doesn't change anything, you're not going to get towed for being parked lawfully, but this changes it so that if you have two unpaid parking tickets and you are currently parked unlawfully, the city has the authority to go down the tow route.
Okay. Sort of a three strikes.
Right.
Jonathan or Nikki, would you clarify for me this scenario wherein, if I understand correctly, if I have my car on the public right-of-way on the street and it's got a couple of flat tires and clearly isn't running, and you come by and you poke at me and I scofflaw, you can tow it, right? Three strikes, you can ticket it, you can tow it. If I get ticketed or get poked and I say, "Okay, fine," and I push it into my driveway, is this saying you can still tow it?
No.
Okay.
Once it goes on your private property, then we would address it as junk stored on the public private property, and we'd address that through administrative letter.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
I have, just wanted to remind Counsel, I handwrote a motion that addresses the additional change, the number five, so to say, for any counselor who wishes to make that motion. I'm going to hand it over to Counsel Randall.
I believe the motion has to allude to the fact that we want to, this is by title only?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Counselor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to adopt General Ordinance Number 25-1410, as presented, with the additional amendments described by the city attorney by title only.
I'll second.
It's been moved by Counsel Randall and seconded by Counsel Richardson to approve the ordinance, amending Chapter 6 of the Municipal Code by title only. Is there any other discussion or questions? Does the city clerk, you read it before the vote? Yeah. Please proceed.
Okay. General Ordinance?
First I have to ask, does anybody, does anybody want to have the ordinance read in its entirety?
No.
I had to ask. Okay, go ahead.
General Ordinance Number 25-1410, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the DOWS Municipal Code, Chapter 6.04, Traffic Control.
All those in favor of the motion, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Is there any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Lessig.
May I add one comment?
Sure.
The chief worthy and I have been going over the stats over the last year, and since this would be timely to talk about towing and tagging. In comparison to 2023 and 2024, we had a 58% increase in tagging of vehicles. That is the increase in the in low, in the up part of tagging vehicles that have these particular violations. Out of those, 49 were towed, and 10 of those were motorhomes, vehicles, trailers. So the, what I get out of this, yes, we had an increase in our community as far as tagging and removing junk vehicles or getting them up to speed to be in compliance, that we still have a 90% compliance once we start the tow tagging process. So it is quite effective.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, item 10B is consideration of a proposal to appoint an engineer of record to the airport, Mr. Renard.
And Mr. Mayor, if I can interject before, go ahead, go ahead, take a seat. Our city clerk had a quick question, just clarification.
I'm sorry, I didn't see Counsel Runyon's vote on that one. Okay, thank you.
There we go.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Counselors. In your packet, you have a.
Got to check to make sure it's on.
The red light on.
Yeah. Hello? Just talking quiet. Okay. In your packet, you have a staff report in regards to an engineer of record for the airport. Every five years, the airport is required to go out for a selection process for an engineering firm to represent us with the FAA, the federal grant funding. It's part of our, the NPIUS process, which means we take federal grant money from, for our airport. We've reached that point. We've actually extended beyond, well beyond the five-year mark due to the fact that I had so many different projects open the last couple of years, and the FAA's intent is to not get in the way of those projects with the current engineering firm. So we've walked through the end of the existing grants, we're closing those out, and now going into a fresh budget cycle and new grants, I have to meet this requirement of the FAA. On December 18th, we put a RFQ out on the street for the engineer, for the engineering firms to respond to. We ended up with one response, and it was the current engineer of record that we have, Precision Approach Engineering out of Corvallis. We did have a, the airport board, pardon me, has a, had a review committee for the subsequent respondents, again, only having one, it was a fairly easy review. Precision Approach has been our engineer of record for about 20 years. They have done a fantastic job, and there was absolute, I've got the results from the review, and there was no questions in regards to their work with the airport. They've been part of our success. And with this process, there is, there's no budget implications with the award because each of the tasks and projects have their own grant funding, and each of those grants have their own specific task associated, task order associated that we would pay the engineering firm from. So staff's recommendation is to move to authorize the city manager to award the engineer selection professional services agreement to Precision Approach Engineering, subject to Clickatack County Board of County Commissioners meeting tomorrow.
Questions? Counsel Ring.
Thank you, Mayor. Jeff, thanks for coming tonight. Were there, is it common to only have the one bidder in this case?
It did surprise me. One of the things that, I guess, in that regard, I received two phone calls. Actually, I had received a phone call, and at one of the aviation conferences I was at, one of the competitive firms to this asked me how our relationship with Precision Approach was. And I said, "It's fantastic. They're part of our success." And they respectfully bowed out at that point, and then I had another firm call and basically asked the same thing, and they just said, "We don't want to get in the way of good moving relationships, and Precision Approach, I believe, does the same thing with other airports and other engineering firms." And so it is a fairly heavy lift for the engineering firm to put the response together, and so they just chose not to do it. It did kind of surprise me, and it's my first time.
Understood. I've found over the last 30 years that, especially in smaller areas like ours, that those are pretty, I mean, they're competitive, but they're also, everybody sort of respects the business relationship that has been established previously, I think, and I, this is sort of evident of that.
Agreed. One of the firms that did reach out in regards to it, they also do master planning, and that is, that is our next, the next thing I'll be in front of you folks for, is that we will need to go out for a master plan for our next 10- to 20-year plan for the airport, and their, the other engineering firm was looking forward to that opportunity.
What's the timeframe on that, Jeff? Going out for a master plan?
I'd like to put the RFP out in the next 90 days.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody like to make a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll move to authorize the city manager to award the engineering, engineer selection professional services agreement to Precision Approach Engineering, subject to the Clickatack County Board of Commissioner, County Commissioners' approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Counsel Ring and seconded by Counsel Randall to authorize the city manager to award the engineer selection professional services contract to Precision Approach Engineering. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Finally, item 10C is a consideration of a proposal to establish a new job position. Mr. Cleaves.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You have a staff report in your packet that I'm going to briefly review. As the council knows, our human resources director departed in early November, and since that time, we've really embarked on a robust process to review the department, the job description, the services it provide, it provides, as well as evaluating other potential opportunities. We brought in expert assistance from CIS to assist us in this matter, which has been very helpful in affirming that, you know, the City of the DOWS, given its size and its complexity, absolutely does need a staff position that is focused on human resources. You know, one of the most important assets, or the most important asset that we have here is the staff, and doing the work every day for our community, and working very hard and diligently and providing excellent service. And so through this process, we really affirm that need, but at the same time, we But at the same time, we, and I in particular, looked at some of the different opportunities that this, we may be able to avail ourselves of, thinking about some of the concepts that I've espoused before, where a large town becoming a small city, we've had some additional departments created, the IT department, our facilities division with a facility supervisor to really answer some of those growing needs and improve the services that we've been delivering for many years. And kind of a best practice for a lot of different managerial models is how many direct reports that you have. I currently have 11, I believe, direct reports where that kind of best, best practice or model spot is around seven or so. And so kind of combining these, these two conversations we are having, presented the opportunity of developing an assistant city manager position that has a focus on human resources. And so this is an ACM HR position where I would, you know, bluntly put that the predominant focus of this position is around HR and 60, 70% or so, 80% or so even, especially right out of the gate with some of the information that we've been receiving in our consultation with CIS to really create an excellent work environment, continue our efforts around robust wage and benefit package, wellness incentives and wellness programs here at the city, assisting us with union labor negotiations, grievances, you know, the whole spectrum of what you would typically think of an HR director. This would also involve some analysis or has involved some analysis of the safety officer position here and their capacity to take on some of the duties that the HR director was doing previously, which I think will free up some of that bandwidth and be a better allocation of staff resources with a, with a given task. And so the assistant city manager component here would, would basically assist me with supervising some of the different departments that we have and providing them stronger support. Initially, and there is some flexibility with this, but the initial portfolio that comes to my mind is having an assistant city manager, HR director that assists with the IT department, facilities, our safety officers, of course, and the library as well. So this will provide more support for them. It'll free up some of my plate, to be honest, and I think will overall is a, is a great opportunity to explore this concept and maintain strong HR services to our city. I'll also add that, you know, over the last couple of years, we've really improved, I think, upon the city council goal and action plan process. And we've been identifying a lot of special projects, community outreach to Salem and other initiatives that we really want to make sure if we're going to do it, let's do it well and let's allocate the resources we need accordingly. Looking at some of the budget implications here and what you have included in your packet and what I'm seeking is authorization for a revised wage table. That wage table will eliminate the previous human resource director position and replace it with an assistant city manager HR position. The prior HR director position was on D five. And so you'll see that that D five line in the wage table, including your packet, is vacant and a new line, D three has been, well, I take that back, the department head three line, the assistant city manager HR position has been added. This represents a net annual salary increase of just a little over $6,500 a year to a maximum of $8,000 a year. And so I think it's per year.
Okay. I stand corrected.
It's okay. You made me second guess myself for a moment there, though. So this is a relatively modest, modest increase for the potential this position has. There are sufficient funds in the city's budget to support this change through the remainder of this fiscal year. And with your approval this evening, we'll budget for that in the upcoming fiscal year and we'll move forward with posting this recruitment as soon as possible. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Sorry, I confused the salary amount with the increase in salary. Okay, questions for the city manager on this?
I have one, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. It would be fair then to characterize this essentially as an evolution of an existing position to something that's more fitting than a brand new position.
Correct, correct. I think this is really some of that opportunity, very, very relatively modest increase here in salary, better reflect some of the needs of the city, they were the continued emphasis we need on these HR services and really takes advantage of this, the shift and the, and the growth of the city overall, I think will be very beneficial.
Seems a wise evolution to me.
Other questions? Counsel Ring?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm curious, Mr. City Manager, what were the, what were the communities? You mentioned that there were nine different Oregon communities that were used for a night, get an idea of compensation. Do we remember?
Yes, I have that list in my office.
Okay.
Well, there, it's fair to say that they are, I would think, commensurate with the size of the DOWs, population wise and also geographically, for example, Hood River is only half our size, but I would think that we probably would have matched salaries with them and sticking also to rural areas outside the Portland metropolitan area. Is that pretty accurate?
Certainly, certainly. And so I, you know, it's, it's sitting on my desk as we speak, but from my recollection, you know, for example, I looked at assistant city managers in Hillsboro and Bend and they, as you might guess, are not the best comparables for us, given the size and complexity of their organizations and their assistant city manager roles were far more exclusively assistant city manager roles and not this HR heavy role. But some of the other examples that come to my mind were Ashland, Albany, I believe. Dallas was a prime example, the city of Dallas. Oh, no, no, city of Independence were some of those prime examples that were more comparable to us. Some of our more typical comparable cities, you know, again, given the size and complexity of the organizations, didn't have the position. So there's a little bit of matchmaking there. And so in looking at the salary comparables, you know, I eliminated some of those externalities, Beaverton, Bend, for example, and focused on the ones that I thought were closest to what we were talking about.
Armiston and Pendleton, I would think, would be part of the survey as well.
Don't believe Pendleton has one. Like I said, I can provide that list to you after this meeting, no problem.
And I'm curious, the, you went over some of the additional duties. This involves also a reorganization of the structure for some of the departments. I guess, is that to me at the surface, is there a specific reason that the title would need to change to an ACM other than just the change in organizational structure and roll up of, of like the IT department and whatnot?
Yeah, I think that's a, that's a big component of it is that part of the positions portfolio will include supporting and managing those departments. I did indicate my intention of how those shifts would initially take place, but I also want to make sure that this is a, there's a certain longevity to this. And so as the city, you know, continues to evolve and different people are in different roles, it may make better sense to shift certain things around to make sure that the greatest support and the greatest strengths are kind of paired up with maybe what some of the weaknesses may be. In some of my conversations with other city managers, that's, that's proved very beneficial. But again, my opinion, out of the gate, that, that initial portfolio is what I'd like to at the very least start with and stay, continue to stay informed through the ACM with those different departments and have that direct continued support of the police department, public works, CDD and others. Certainly have, we've had conversations with our management and leadership team and I've met with these individual departments. You know, it's certainly not to convey that my door is closed in any way, I'm still accessible to them, but there are only so many hours in the day.
And I, I assume that was well received with some of those other department heads?
Yeah, there was general, general understanding. I mean, I think, I think there's some awareness of how much time that I have and, and, you know, there's a certain amount of, this is something new for the city of the DOWs, there's a certain amount of change and change management to work through. So I'm eager to kind of roll this out, but yeah, receptive.
And one last question, how do you, do you have any insight or thoughts on how this might impact recruitment for the HR director position? Because we have, we have public works with Dave Anderson this year, we have an assistant public works, we have human resources, and I think those are the management positions that are still vacant.
Yeah, we have our, our economic development officer will be retiring at the end of March and we do have several retirements going on throughout public works in our different divisions. So recruitment and retention are high on the list. I'm really interested to see the response to this. I, you know, cautiously think it'll draw more attention, more interested applicants because of the flexibility to the position, but I guess we'll see.
Okay, so you'd say that, I guess, to sum it up, you'd expect that this would make it more competitive and potentially help with recruitment of this position?
I, I think so and certainly hope so.
Thank you.
Other questions? Maybe you could elaborate a little bit on the recruitment process. Where do you plan on advertising if this is approved tonight and how soon?
Oh, so we have, we have a program called applicant pro that assists us with our typical recruitment processes here. For example, the public works director position, we brought on a recruitment firm to help with us, given the scale and scope of that position, but I intend to follow our typical practices here. You know, there's a variety of different ways that we post, League of Oregon City's job boards, you know, my own OCCMA job boards, and really just, you know, use our typical process to, to post that position. Reviewing our applicant pro software, actually, and the process that we, we use to recruit and retain employees is actually one of the things high on the list for this individual coming in. So similar to our onboarding and offboarding practices and our handbooks and whatnot and really how we set people up for success when they first start there. So a little bit of chicken and egg here with bringing this person on board and then to work on the processes that they just went through.
Thank you. Any other questions for the city manager? Would anybody like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I move to adopt the February 10, 2025 wage table adding an assistant city manager slash HR position and eliminating the human resource director position as presented.
Is there a second?
McLaughlin will second.
It's been moved by Counsel Richardson and seconded by Counsel McLaughlin to adopt the wage table, proposed wage table, adding the assistant city manager position. Is there any more discussion or questions? All those in favor, please say aye or raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
One.
Oh, sorry.
I, nay, sorry.
Were you voted no? Four to one. Okay, the city council of the city of the DOWs will now meet in executive session in accordance with ORS 192 dot six, six, zero, two, D, to conduct deliberations with persons designated by their governing body to carry on labor negotiations. Representatives of the news media shall not be allowed to attend the executive session. All members of the audience are pleased asked to leave the room. Are we meeting in here or? Well, why don't we meet in the conference room? Okay. No final decision may be made in executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back into this room. We expect to return in an open session in about 15 minutes.